Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, November 6, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. As I call this meeting to order, I would ask that you silence your cell phones, please, and notify me as the chair if you are making any video or audio recording of this open session meeting. The placement and operation of the recording equipment must not interfere with the conduct of this meeting. And I would ask that you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, move into recognitions. Any recognitions from the board?
I think of anything right offhand.
Any announcements from the board?
I have an announcement, Madam Chair. I'd like to announce that the League of Women Voters is hosting a film screening of the movie Just Mercy this Thursday, November 9, from 6 to 9 p.m. at the Falmouth Public Library on Main Street.
This Thursday?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other announcements from the board? Okay, we will move into public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself, and since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board will not participate in any discussion or debate of your topic. Is there anyone here for public comment? Mr. Fineran.
This was actually not mine. Somebody pointed it out to me, actually, a town employee. But it appears that, I guess, the project that was going on at Paul's Precision Automotive up the street isn't going to happen, and I'd just like to suggest that that might be an ideal spot for the town to consider for some more downtown parking. Just throwing it out there. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Fineran. Anyone else here for public comment? Okay. We will move into committee interviews. We have one opening for the Energy Committee. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening. We actually have two vacant positions on the Energy Committee, one of which has a term ending June 30, 2025, and the second with a term ending June 30, 2026. Mr. Harold David Leslie submitted his application materials on October 4. He's a retired engineer and research scientist who worked in the energy industry, oil and gas, for over 33 years. Madam Chair, it's my recommendation that, following the interview, the Select Board vote to appoint applicant Harold David Leslie to fill the Energy Committee vacancy with the term that expires on June 30, 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Renshaw. Is Mr. Leslie here? Please, come up to the podium. Good evening.
I wrote a few things down for the sake of succinctness and coherence.
Sure.
Okay, shouldn't take too long. I'm Harold David Leslie. I usually go by David, although I respond to Harold as well. I've been a resident of Falmouth and a homeowner for the last 10 and 1/2 years, living in Precinct 1. I also lived in Falmouth for about four years during the mid-1970s, when I was an employee and then an ocean engineering grad student at HUI. My wife, Pat, and I moved to Falmouth in 2013, after I retired from my job with Schlumberger, a service company in the oil and gas industry, and we moved back to the United States. I had fond memories of Falmouth and met many of the criteria we had in our search for a retirement town. So most of my career was spent working for Schlumberger in either engineering or research, although I did spend several years in operations, briefly as a junior field engineer for Schlumberger Offshore Services, and later on staff and marketing. I also worked post-retirement for them as a contract science writer. Schlumberger is a company in the upstream energy industry that provides a wide range of oilfield services, but the groups I was involved with developed instruments to make geophysical measurements of rock formation properties. So after moving back to Falmouth as a retiree, I served as volunteer secretary for the local IEEE Ocean Engineering Chapter for about four years, and during that time I arranged for several energy-related technical talks, including one by Mayflower Wind Engineers in 2021, and another in 2022 about the Marine Renewable Energy Collaborative and the Bore Entidal Test Site. And perhaps we should think a little bit more about tidal energy, I think, but anyway, in the future. In 2019, I was one of the participants in the group which founded FALCAN, the Falmouth Climate Action Network, and I've served on the FALCAN Steering Committee since the group was formally reestablished in January 2020. I'm currently co-leading the FALCAN Education Subcommittee, along with Lynn Shad. I've been an organizer for the Climate Book Club. And by the way, our next meeting of the book club is next, this Wednesday, where we'll discuss climate optimism, which hopefully should be uplifting. Since the beginning of this year, I have participated as a volunteer member of the Falmouth Housing Association Solar Panel Array Committee, which is led by Mike Galasso. I've been attending meetings of the Falmouth Energy Committee as a guest since the middle of 2022. It's my understanding that the Energy Committee is a responsible party for implementing the Climate Protection Action Plan that the town actually has, and for developing a public outreach and education program. And I am currently enrolled in Enroads training, and I hope that I can use that to help with the public outreach. So finally, the Select Board strategic plans have named the Energy Committee as a responsible party for developing alternative energy sources for municipal sites, and I am very much interested in helping Falmouth participate in this energy transition and achieve our goals and commitments as a Massachusetts green community. I think my background may be complementary to that of the current members of the Energy Committee.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
I'm sold.
I have just two comments. One, I looked at your, the articles that you participated or written in, and I thought those were excellent, and I also liked the fact that you were a Peace Corps volunteer. So thank you for that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make motion to appoint Harold David Leslie to serve on the Energy Committee to the position with a term ending June 30, 2026.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. Okay, we are a little bit early for our public hearings, so I would like to take something in the agenda out of order. Mr. Renshaw, let's look at the approved annual license renewals.
Bear with me one moment, please. No, I don't need that. Thank you. Just wasn't ready for her. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Wanted to make sure I.
I threw you a curveball.
Yeah, Madam Chair, in your packets, you have documentation which has been submitted by the respective businesses for their annual license renewal for calendar year 2024. The businesses have all met their requirements, the checklist requirements for submitting all of the application, all the application materials and payments that were due. The below-listed licensees have submitted all of the requirements, as I mentioned. Mary Ellen's Bakery at 829 Main Street and Pie in the Sky at 10 Water Street are both applying for renewal under the Common Victual License application. And as I understand it, Madam Chair, in the past, if there's not any questions, the board has approved these by category. So I would introduce and recommend approval of Mary Ellen's Bakery and Pie in the Sky, the 2024 annual license renewal for the Common Victual category.
You have a recommendation from the town manager. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the town manager's request.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the Common Victual licenses for Mary Ellen's Bakery, 829 Main Street, Pie in the Sky, 10 Water Street. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The second category for consideration tonight is the Used Car Dealer License category. Braga's Auto Sales at 227R Main Street is the lone application within this category, and my recommendation is that the Select Board approve the 2024 annual license for Braga's Auto Sales.
Is that moved?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the Used Car Dealer License for Braga's Auto Sales, 227R Main Street. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you. The third category is Fortune Teller License. We have one applicant for calendar year 2024 annual license renewal, and that is Holistic Swan, located at 628 West Falmouth Highway. It's my recommendation, Select Board, approve the 2024 annual license renewal.
Madam Chair, go ahead.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Fortune Teller License, Holistic Swan, 628 West Falmouth Highway. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lastly, under the category of Taxi Limousine Service, we have one applicant for 2024 license renewal, which is White Tie Limousine Company Incorporated, located at 292 T-Ticket Highway. It's my recommendation, Madam Chair, Select Board approves the 2024 annual license for White Tie Limousine Company Incorporated.
So moved. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the Taxi Limousine License, White Tie Limousine Co., Inc., 292 T-Ticket Highway. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Madam Chair, may I make another suggestion as to another quick one to move to?
Yes.
Item number five, vote to authorize reallocation of unspent America Rescue Plan ARPA grant funds. Would you like to entertain that?
I will take that out of order, absolutely. Mr. Renshaw? Thank you, Mr. Johnson Staub.
Sure. I'll take that one. So we, the board may recall that we received, you know, a significant allocation of ARPA funds, and the board has previously voted to allocate the full amount that we have received to a number of different projects. So everything was initially allocated. However, at this point, and that original number was $3,243,993. We do have, within one of those allocations, some unspent funds. So we have $144,923 that was originally allocated for non-public safety employee COVID bonuses, which was not spent. We are proposing, the town manager is recommending, that we allocate those funds for two purposes. The first purpose is $80,000 for a urine diversion outreach and education initiative as a first phase of a planned four-year urine diversion provisional pilot project. That request was the result of a dialogue with members of the Falmouth Pond Coalition, and it was advocated by community members from the Green Center. The Water Quality Management Committee recently voted to recommend that we fund $80,000 for this initial education and outreach. So that is the first amount that we are proposing for reallocation of ARPA funds, and if it is agreeable, Madam Chair, I'll go on to the second purpose, and then you can discuss.
Go ahead.
So the second purpose is for water main replacements, and the idea here was that there are some reporting requirements that go along with each commitment of funds, and the board has previously allocated some of these ARPA funds for water main replacements. We're still short of our goal for this year to allocate $3 million for water main replacements. So allocating this balance of $64,923 gets us a little bit closer to that goal.
Any questions from the board? Seems fairly straightforward to me.
Can I just ask why we didn't spend all of the money on the non-public safety employee COVID bonuses?
It was just a matter of getting the, it was difficult to get the estimate correctly with the, with the number of staff at a given point in time. So that's the remaining balance. But all of the employees who were on the payroll at that time got the bonus that was approved.
So it was a bit of an overestimate because you don't really know.
Exactly. We probably funded everybody, but we were short of.
But we didn't have to. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
No, I'm happy to see these move forward, move approval of authorizing reallocation of $144,923 for unspent American Rescue Plan Act grant funds for the urine diversion outreach and education and to water main replacements.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, we are right on time. Okay, we will open our public hearings, and our first hearing is an application for change of ownership interest, change of officers, directors, LLC managers, and change of manager of its all-alcoholic package store license, Falmouth Fine Wines and Spirits LLC, doing business as John's Liquor Store, located at 729 Main Street, Falmouth. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you. I see Mr. Clower is here for the applicant. Just a real brief summary overview, proposed new manager is Mark S. Saunders Ferreira, and the new owners are Marcus Saunders Ferreira and Coral M. Zine. The ABCC quarry forms have been submitted with the application. Zoning Administrator and Assessor's Office have both reviewed the application, have no issues, no concerns, and the Police Department has reviewed the application, has no objections or concerns.
And I'm going to ask Mr. Zinski to go ahead and read the notice that was posted, please.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of General Laws as amended that Falmouth Fine Wines and Spirits LLC DBA, John's Liquor Store, has applied for change of ownership interest, change of officers, directors, LLC manager, and a change of manager of its all-alcoholic package store license located at 729 Main Street, Falmouth, Mass. Hearing on the above application will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, November 6, 2023, at 6:45 p.m. Comments may be sent to selectboard@falmouthmass.gov per order of the Select Board. Nancy Robbins Taylor, Chair, Edwin P. Zalinski, Douglas Brown, Angelae Scott Price, and Robert Mescal.
Mr. Clower, you are here on behalf of the applicant. I do see the police, no objection pending completion of the quarry?
Yes.
Okay, that was my one comment. And is Mark Saunders Ferreira here?
He is.
Where is he? Step up here.
My understanding was the quarry was completed as well.
Okay. You're Marion Saunders' son?
Yes.
Oh, I remember you when you were just a little, little kid, and I had you as a student, which is really scary. Go ahead, Mr. Clower.
Thank you very much. I, for the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I am an attorney here in town, and I'm representing the applicants, Falmouth Fine Wine and Spirits LLC, as well as Mark Saunders Ferreira Jr. and Coral Zine in their individual capacities, both of whom are here with us tonight. As has been noted, we are before you seeking approval for a change of the LLC managers, a change of the ownership interest, and a change of manager of record for the liquor license. John's Liquors has been owned and operated by Mark Ferreira Sr. for the last 45 years. He's always very generous with the community and local charities. He's owned that in various capacities, but the last 10 years have been as Falmouth Fine Wine and Spirits LLC. Tragically, Mr. Ferreira passed away unexpectedly in the spring. His children, Mark and Coral, were left to business. The ownership will be split evenly between them. Neither of them have an existing interest in the liquor license. Both are named as new managers of the LLC. Mark Jr. has applied to be the manager of record for the liquor license. He's worked with his father since 2013. He's very familiar with the business. He's served as the operations manager for the last 10 years, so there's actually going to be very little day-to-day change in his job. This allows a well-established local business to stay local, providing continuity and ownership of ownership and service. While they're certainly heartbroken over the loss of their father, they're excited about the future of the business, their ability to continue it and improve on its traditions, and that's really it. We'd be happy to address any questions from the board. I think everything else is set forth in the application.
Any questions from the board?
No questions.
Just want to say I'm sorry for your loss.
What happened to the Corvette? What happened to the Corvette out back?
It's still there. Yeah.
Happy to see the family business carrying on.
I would agree. It's been there for forever.
Still seems to be run just as well, with Mark still there every day. Not that I go every day.
I think you just let yourself out.
Seems to be there.
Seems like, yeah.
Any comments from the public regarding this application? Okay, hearing none. I would entertain a motion to close the hearing. Is that moved?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Discussion amongst the board?
I would move approval, unless there's any other comment.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the application. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Good luck, Mark.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Okay, we will move into our second hearing, an application for an all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license, Vine Food and Restaurant, Inc., doing business as The Vine, to be executed 824 Main Street in Falmouth. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant, Tatiana Nobre, completed the attached application for new license on October 18. Building Commissioner has reviewed the application and approved the floor plan, has listed no objections or concerns. The Falmouth Police Department has reviewed the application and has also indicated no concerns or objections. And I wanted to note, Madam Chair and Select Board, that a food service establishment permit was issued back on June 26 of this year.
The applicant? Oh, did you, I'm sorry. We got to get that hearing notice in. Go.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that Vine Food and Restaurant, Inc., DBA, The Vine, has applied for an all-alcoholic beverage restaurant license to be exercised at 824 Main Street, Falmouth, Mass. Hearing on the above application will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, November 6, at 6:45 p.m. Comments may be sent to selectboard@falmouthmass.gov per order of the Select Board. Nancy Taylor, Chair, Edwin P. Zalinski, Douglas C. Brown, Angelae Scott Price, Robert Mescal.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinski. Hello, welcome. You are the applicant?
Yes, Tatiana.
Questions from the board for the applicant? Anything we need to know from you? Anything you'd like to add to your application?
We opened since July without liquor. It's been really hard, so nothing to.
Okay. Mr. Brown, did you have a question or comment?
Just curious. We didn't, I don't see a floor plan. Do we need a floor plan? We usually get one, don't we?
I agree.
It's usually the one in the packet.
Yeah, I don't know why it's not in the packet. It certainly has been received and reviewed by the.
Been reviewed.
Been reviewed.
Capacity is correct and all that.
I do know Building Commissioner has reviewed that floor plan and approved it, but sorry it's not in the packet tonight.
So I had a letter of approval. I just didn't see the floor plan. Okay, I'm okay with that.
Any comments from the public regarding this application? Okay, seeing none. I will entertain a motion to close the hearing. Is that moved?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Conversation amongst the board? Looks to be in order to me. I can move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the application. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck. Okay, we're going to move into business. First up, we have a report from the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And Mr. Robinson, I have you slated for 15 minutes.
Yes. Thank you. You have a hand with that, Alan? Yes, Peter, thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here, and just really a month after we're here, talking to you about the initiative regarding food waste separation and composting. So it's very, very happy to be here again so quickly. Our committee is a seven-member committee. You'll note we have one vacancy, and we certainly reached out to the public here who, in the audience, are listening, are watching, to apply for the position. I think we're a very active and energetic committee, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of work to do, and a lot of challenges, and a lot of teamwork, and we're hoping to fill and get that seventh member because we really need it. In figuring out how to start today, I looked at an email that Mary Reither, the Department of Public Works Recycling and Solid Waste Coordinator forwarded to me, one she just received this morning from a resident. And I'm quoting a few of the pieces in that, in that email. And again, this is the writer writing to Mary. "You helped me with obtaining one of the small recycling bins when, at my ripe old age of 80-something, I couldn't handle the standard cart." It was a responsive approach taken by the DPW for that. We applaud. "I have some questions on DPW's 1118 paper shredding event at the Lawrence School, 9 o'clock to 12 o'clock on the 18th. And note that shredded paper is not acceptable in curbside recycling, but there's an innovation. This is the first ever the town has done, where people can bring their papers that need to be shredded, have them shredded, and having that paper recycled not through curbside, but through, but through a vendor. By the way, I started doing the food scraps recycling about six months ago. I find the drop-off convenient, and I am amazed that it has reduced my curbside trash to about a quarter of what it was. Thank you and the Solid Waste Advisor Committee for all you do to promote recycling." Communicating with the community. And finally, I assume you are working on getting additional drop-off locations for the food waste, and that's the work-to-be-done category.
No, thank you.
Because that's something we do need. "I think you're familiar with SWAC's role in the community. It's taking a leading role in helping the town maintain and enhance its integrated solid waste management program, encourage development and implementation of environmentally, physically, and socially sound means and methods to reduce trash tonnage, and operate the pick-of-the-litter swap shop to promote waste reduction by reuse and repurposing. We certainly don't do this alone. We are really a participant and really a partnership with the entire community, certainly Department of Public Works taking the lead in all of this, the town manager's office, the swap shop patrons and volunteers, the Falmouth community as a whole, the Falmouth Enterprise for their coverage of our activities as well in solid waste management issues, and the opportunity to present to Talking Trash Column on a monthly basis, and the just-started Recycling TIP program, which is, which was an initiative not by the Solid Waste Advisor Committee, the DPW, but a resident of the town of Falmouth who contacted the DPW and the Solid Waste Advisor Committee. We love the idea. We suggested they contact the Enterprise, and like three weeks later, a new, a new element of our communications, our town's communications about recycling has begun, and that's just, just a tremendous thing. And of course, you all, the Select Board. There's a number of initiatives, and these are not solid waste advisory initiatives per se. These are Falmouth, Falmouth accomplishments. The formation, you know, I guess the, well, back a second, the first two and the last one are really key. The formation of the Falmouth Reduction Advisor Committee by the Select Board, I guess, early this summer, is really an important step and will lead to very important steps in our management of plastics within our community. It's a much, I'll practically say, it's a much better approach than some other towns have taken to either just say ban all plastics, you know, by, or to just reject the petitions to their town meetings. The second, again, we're tremendously excited, is that the public schools have started separating cafeteria food waste, both in the kitchen and from the kids' trays, so that they can be composted. They started at Mullen Hall at the start of the school year, and other schools will follow during the course of the school year. I've just today learned the tonnages for the first month at Mullen Hall, and I can't share it because it hasn't been presented to the, to the school committee, and it will be, I think, on November 28. But between that start and going to their schools, it's an impressive amount of tonnage that will be diverted from going to the landfill. And going to the, last of the initiatives, is we've begun the outreach to the county regarding development of an Upper Cape Regional Food Waste Composting Facility. And we're recognizing that's going to be a lot of work. There's a lot of steps involved, a lot of pieces to put together, but it's important to our future. Accomplishments, messaging to the community. The information on the town website is much improved over what it was last year and even more so what it was in the past before that. There's been a number of public forums on recycling and related issues, and there will be more, including one on November 15th at the library. For anybody who's interested, we hope you'll attend. The use of social media, finally, thanks, thanks to Peter Johnson's job, I guess about a year ago, we were able to, Mary White, Mary Reither and DPW was able to have a recycling Facebook page. And that's made a huge difference in getting the message out. We've also, DPW as well as SWAC has created press releases that have gotten, gotten coverage and have gotten the message out. And the generating of, of information for the Falmouth Enterprise. The Falmouth Enterprise has begun attending our meetings, and the message is getting out through their articles. Accomplishments at the Pick of the Litter, the Swap Shop. We had 9,446 visits year to date. It's a 57% increase over 2022. The Pick Chick volunteers, and they, that's their term. They call themselves the Pick Chicks, and they are an amazing group of volunteers. A year and a half ago, there were four volunteers. That's before they became the Pick Chicks. Now they're up to nineteen. And they can use more. So there's still an opportunity there for people to vol, to join the team and volunteer. The Facebook has created a buzz. People see what's going on at the Swap Shop and what's available, and results in, you know, a 57% increase. It's an opportunity to engage the community and the other elements of waste reduction and reuse. And we're very much blessed by being supported by an excellent waste management facility staff. Challenges and opportunities. Trash tonnage reduction by food waste separation and composting. We talked about that a month ago. But there's major elements here in reaching out to the community to educate and form, and really even more importantly, engage them in recycling or composting, whether that's in their backyard, whether that's by taking it to the waste management facility and hoping for other, other locations in town for drop-offs, or it's, it's engaging with a contractor, the Black Earth firm, that will pick up at residences. And it's engaging with the county and the other Upper Cape communities in developing a, a, at least a Upper Cape wine composting facility. Trash tonnage reduction, the second element, is we know that while recycling, we're surveying recycling, and people are recycling pretty well, we know that trash, recyclables are being, still being included in a number of people's trash. We haven't looked, but when we go to the landfill, when we've been to the landfill and we see Falmouth's trash being dumped, there's a lot of bottles, there's a lot of cans, there's a lot of paper. We have to work on that to get that tonnage out of the trash and into the recycling. And the Swap Shop, Swap Shop is parking limited. We've got to find a way for more parking, and we need to improve the facilities. So we have requests. A half-time recycling and solid waste coordinator and a committee of volunteers can only do so much. We ask that, that the town include, includes and approves in the fiscal year 2025 budget, town operating budget, a line item to make the recycling and solid waste management coordinator position full-time from the current nineteen hours a week. At a grade level, salary level, commensurate with the actual responsibilities being borne by that position. And second, to authorize DPW to develop an integrated waste management plan, but that plan could only be developed if there's a full-time waste management coordinator, because the hours that she had, that the position has right now doesn't have the time to come up with a plan. But we do need a plan. We want to have better recycling. We want to have composting. But you need a plan. We need a, we need a plan that has goals and means and methods, and we need such a plan. And that's our recommendations, and we thank you for this opportunity.
Any questions from the board?
I don't have any questions. I just want to comment. I always enjoy your presentations because you're so enthusiastic about the work that you do. So, thank you.
Well, you know, you get, when you see emails like we received this morning, you know, thanking the DPW for what they're doing and solid waste advisor committee, and then you get a, you get a member of the community comes up with this great idea and takes it to the paper, and then the paper adopts it. You know, it generates a lot of enthusiasm. So for those folks out there, there's a, there's a vacant position on our very enthusiastic committee.
I'm impressed that you're up 57% at the Swap Shop. And I also will say that I think Mary Reither has been an incredible addition and works really hard and does amazing work. And I'm looking forward to the paper recycling shredding piece at the Lawrence School. Mr. Brown?
Alan, where is the food waste going that's coming from Mullen Hall? Where, where's he in place?
It is being, is being collected by Black Earth. I mean, they have a, the school has a contract with Black Earth to pick it up, just as they do at the waste management facility. And they take it to somewhere up on the North Shore. I mean, it's a long, long way. It's not, it's certainly not economical or really environmental friendly to haul it that distance. They are working on, they are working on, you know, they're talking to some communities in southeast Massachusetts. They're very open. We've talked to them. They're very open to, you know, a location on the Cape, perhaps the joint-based Cape Cod. But it really takes, it's, we see a public, a public-private partnership is very likely the way to go. And doing it on a multi-town basis, whether it's four towns or the whole Cape or, or south, all southeast penc, southeast Massachusetts, makes a great deal of sense. But it really takes the initiative, and that's why we are seeking to work with the county. And not just work with them, but kind of drive, not drive the bus, but push the buses as the need be to, so that the county can move as quickly as we can, that the other towns get on board, that we, that we investigate what can be done by the private sector and so forth.
And I've heard from folks at the county that they've identified really we should have one here in the Upper Cape and one toward the Lower Cape because there's that much of a need.
Thank you very much. Well done.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we will move on to the report from the Recreation Committee. Welcome, Ms. Cuny, and we have you also scheduled for 15 minutes.
Let's see how enthusiastic I can be. My name is Sandra Cuny. I'm Vice Chair of the Recreation Committee. I'm in your packet. You should have a copy of the Falmouth Recreation Department's annual report. It was submitted by Recreation Director Joe Olenek. And I'd just like to highlight a couple of things in that. Hopefully you have it. The recent completion of the Nide Park tennis pickleball basketball complex is absolutely wonderful. And what's that saying? If you build it, they will come. The citizens of Falmouth are truly enjoying it. All the courts have been busy. I'd like to add here, the Recreation Committee did a tour of our recreational fields back in July. A couple of concerns at Nide Park was that the stairs leading down to the new courts were in desperate need of repair, as were the wooden picnic tables on the grounds that have very sharp splintered edges and nails sticking out. This wasn't part of the CPA funding for that major renovation there, but definitely it needs to be fixed. I know that Joe has talked with the DPW about this, but I wanted to bring it to your attention as well, just to make sure that we can get those things done. Now that we have a wonderful complex bringing all those people there, you want to make it safe. The only other safety issue at one of the fields was on Route 151 where the benches, also wooden benches, have some nails exposed. So those are the only two safety issues that we could find. Everything else is, you know, not that important right now. The Recreation Department's Summer Adventure Program, as always, a huge success. It's a much-needed program. There's four sessions. There's 130 children that attend each session. They're grades one through six. Half of those children attend all four sessions, which you can see, see the need for it. Each year, there's always a waiting list, and Joe was fortunate this year to accommodate all those on the waiting list this past year. The other Recreation Department programs for our youth, such as sailing, golf, soccer, basketball, baseball, et cetera, they were all successful programs this year. All in all, there's approximately 30 different programs that the Recreation Department offers that include new programs, adult programs, and senior programs. And they're pretty much all listed in that town report that we, that you have in front of you. The annual celebrations after prom event. It's been held at the Gus Canty Recreation Center every year since 1995. So you minus the two years of the pandemic, we've had about 27 years. This is the Falmouth High School after prom, where all juniors and seniors are invited, whether or not they attend a prom. We open the doors at 11:30 at night, goes till five in the morning. It's sponsored and supported by Falmouth Together We Can Incorporated. Yet truly, it's a community effort from citizens, parents, students, and businesses. And we want to say many thanks to the town and the Recreation Department for housing this event each year. The new Sandwich Road Playground, formerly the SBLI Playground that was dismantled when the senior center was built. It's nearing completion at the Sandwich Road Fields. It's five years in the making, but thank you to the DPW. And we will let you know when it's finished, right, Joe? It's halfway done. The Recreation Committee continues to advocate for new fields, as stated in the master plan that we had done in 2017. We advocate for accessibility to all recreational fields for handicapped and disabled persons. We supported the rehabilitation of the Little League Complex, which is long overdue, and the construction for new pickleball courts as needed for one of the fastest-growing sports in America and here in our town. I've been a member of the Recreation Committee since 1990. I call it the year of the charter change. And I'm very much aware of the way things used to be when Recreation Committee was once a town-elected position that hired the Recreation Director, oversaw the budget and all the recreational programs, to now being an appointed position by the Board of Selectmen. And we are a policymaking committee, one that oversees recreational needs for children, young adults, and elderly, and make recommendations to the Select Board. There's been a growing frustration amongst Recreation Committee members. No surprise, it was on the front page of the Enterprise, mostly from a lack of communication. There's nothing in the charter that states town management or recreation director need to let committee members know all the decisions they make. So when we learned of the delay to approve the Little League Complex, done, approve both CPA funds, it was frustrating. When we learned how monies appropriated for a new turf field were eliminated from the capital plan that we'd been advocating for since 2017, it was frustrating. When we read in the paper that monies were going to be appropriated for painting over pickleball courts and electronic system proposed to lock and unlock gates, it was not only frustrating, it was embarrassing. So the Recreation Committee, Chairman Bob Brown, Scott Gelfey, Tom Zine, Richard Bowles, Mike Healan, Patricia Morano, and myself want to be able to make recommendations to the Select Board, but we can only do that with better communication. Now, better communication has been promised by the town manager and the Recreation Director. He actually attended one of our meetings. He saw the frustration with citizens and the committee. So moving forward, we will hopefully all be on the same page, and we will continue to make recreational improvements that benefit all. Thank you. And I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments?
I'm good.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Somebody left to watch you.
Bring it to the Swap Shop.
Okay, we will move on to a report from the Commission on Substance Use. 15 minutes.
We're all set. So glad to be here today. Beverly Costasio-Vola, the Chair at the Commission on Substance Use. And we have a lot to talk about tonight, so I'll try to be succinct as possible. I want to point out our members, Samantha Bauer and myself, and Suzie Hartman, who without the staff help, we would not do nearly anything that we do now. But we also have, we, we had to say goodbye this year to Kath Schilling for health reasons, and Doris Kramer, who wanted to concentrate on opening up Learn to Cope in Falmouth, which, which had their open house a couple of weeks ago. But we're happy, very happy, to bring on board Rick Corey, who brings wealth of knowledge in his own recovery, as well as his experience at Barnstable County House of Corrections. Rabbi Elias Lieberman, who brings the experience of his congregation and other faith leaders, and, and Dennis, I'm sorry, and Dennis Lyons, retired pharmacist. So we have a lot of really exciting experience, and we have a full contingent, five commissioners. So we're, we're very proud about that. So they bring a different perspective and a, and expertise that we haven't had on the commission before, and we're really happy to have that. So in the past year, we've done a number of things. We celebrated Recovery Month with the photographer and artist and author, Michael Blanchard. We had him at the library. We had, he did some book signing. It was a very good event, and he's a phenomenal speaker. I hope to be able to bring him again in the future. We did trunk-or-treat last year, and were able to engage with a lot of families and handed out our bags that we have with our logo and name, along with some materials around youth and substance use disorder. We began the Nullox Box Initiative with Learn to Cope and AIDS Support Group of Cape Cod, and were able to help facilitate bringing that in front of the Department of Health and now Placement. And if you have questions about that, we can answer some of those later. We co-sponsored the, the high school again for their, what's next? I can't read. This is too little.
You might want to push the microphone over just a little.
Okay. We co-sponsored the Substance Use Disorder presentation with Learn to Cope at the high school. We had a sports medicine doctor talking about how, how addiction in students, student athletes can impact their life and their career. And that was very well-attended. In March, we began the community engagement process regarding the municipal opiate abatement funds, which I have a lot to say about in a little bit. And then in May, we supported the celebration after-prom party, as we have every year. And I think Nullox Boxes are getting ready to be installed.
Yeah, we're waiting for, we're expecting to get some signs back from a printer that we've been working with. And so Bab's going to share more about the abatement funds, but before jumping into the community engagement work that we did, let me advance, just wanted to review if this is new information or not about the state guidelines that the town has signed on to regarding the spending of opioid abatement funds. And just for your review, the funds that the town has started to receive and will continue to receive over the next many years, 15 to 16 years, are to be spent on those strategies listed in front of you. Opioid use treatment, support for people in treatment and recovery, connections to care, harm reduction, addressing the needs of criminally injustice, criminal justice-involved people, support for pregnant and parenting women. people, support for pregnant and parenting women and their families, including babies with neonatal abstinence syndrome, and to prevent the misuse of opioids and implement prevention education. And you received a much lengthier document in your packet about different strategies that has, that are approved by the state for implementation by communities. And on this next page, which is hard to see, but you have in your packet, so through the year 2038, the town of Falmouth at this point in time will be receiving two-point-four million dollars to be used on strategies that to mitigate the impacts of the opioid crisis. Averaged out over the next fifteen years, that leaves about a hundred and fifty-nine thousand per year. These funds don't expire, they don't need to be spent within a fiscal year that they're received, and they will remain in the budget as a line item for the purposes solely for mitigating the impacts of the opioid epidemic. There continues to be some settlements coming through the AG's office, so there's likelihood that some more funds will be trickling through. But that is what, we began this community engagement process before talking about how these funds would be spent to really engage with the community that's been impacted the most.
So we wanted to be really intentional about the work with the funds that we knew were going to be coming in, and we knew it would be important for us to engage the community in some way. And so we started a process, we brought in some advisory members from the community, people with lived experience. And after a couple of meetings, we found that we were putting the horse before the cart, so to speak, and we really needed to backtrack and look at processes. So the overall goal of these, of this community engagement, did it swatch over? It did. It's to engage the community, increasing awareness around the settlement funds, to involve people with substance use disorder and other lived experience in that decision-making process, to be as inclusive as possible, and to be thoughtful and intentional with the process, and not to create more harm for community members, and to create a model practice with community engagement event templates, which other towns can duplicate and individualize to their own needs. And that came about because Kate Lena from the Barnstable County Substance Addiction Council was one of our partners, as you can see in this next slide. And so Suzie and Kate and Sky Freese-Cole was our consultant and facilitator. We did have an advisory group of interested citizens and community stakeholders. We had the design team, which consisted of myself, Suzie, Sky, and Kate. Earlier in the process, we had two other, two other members, but they had to drop out. And then we tried to engage as much as possible with people with lived experience. So what did we do? Well, this was a long, as I said, very thought-out process. In March and May, we began to convene that advisory group and engage consultants and created a design team and sort of prepped for what we wanted to do. In June, we had our large community conversation. We had about sixty people at St. Barnabas. It was done in a world café model where people moved from table to table and questions were asked. And Sky was able to capture all that, you'll see a little bit of it in another slide. Very, very engaging, and we had a lot of good feedback from that event. In September, we convened five focus groups, so we wanted to start narrowing it down. And so we met with families with substance use issues, we met with parents with substance use issues, we met with, what else am I missing here? School administration, we met with. Families who's lost a loved one. And what was the fifth one, Suzie? Bi-PAC, we had a Bi-PAC. Yeah. And so, again, you know, we knew we weren't going to hit everyone, all the towns, all the town, different groups that we could have had, you know, we came up with afterwards, well, we didn't engage veterans and, you know, we didn't engage those who live in sober homes. And we have plans, hopefully, moving forward, to do some of that. But we really wanted to get this piece done. And then we held a reflecting back session in October, where some of the people who had been part of those focus groups and the larger community conversation came together with us again at St. Barnabas, with Sky leading us. And then there were two commission working sessions where it was really about the commissioners really delving into the, all of the data that we had collected, which was quite a bit, and really looking at, okay, how do we move forward with what we learned? And so this next slide kind of shows you a little bit of what we learned. You know, lots of things, what's missing, what's not working, what's, what is working? What, what do the Falmouth schools need? Are there gaps? What's been doing, you know, what does the school community environment need? Again, it was just a, it was, it looks a little chaotic, but it, it was really, the way Sky puts things together, it's really easy to see where she was going with it. And Suzie's going to show you that next piece.
So these are some of the key themes that came through. It's only a sampling, we have a large spreadsheet of the raw data of all the feedback that was gathered at every community session. So I don't need to read all of them, but one that came through quite a bit was a need for recovery support navigators, helping with people, helping people with tangible needs in early recovery, some of the basic needs of transportation and housing, and again, that sort of falls under recovery support navigation. What came up a lot still is that there is a great deal of stigma around addiction still, and that education is needed across the board in schools, in our community. Visible things in our community to celebrate recovery or to acknowledge the opioid crisis, that came up quite a bit. Addressing early trauma in people's lives, increasing awareness of the resources that currently exist. A lot of folks came forward saying, I didn't know what was there, even though there might be a lot of resources in the community, folks aren't aware of where to go and what to do. We have some really, excuse me, excellent programs and resources in the community like WellStrong and Peer Recovery, and some others were mentioned, and that those, growing those models and supporting those models would be great for our community. There was a lot of acknowledgement that things are still very broken, people are still dying. We had thirteen overdose deaths in 2022. I think it was more like, what was it, in the county? I don't have the county number offhand, but thirteen in Falmouth in 2022. And the issue of sober houses came up, need for better access, better management, more oversight. And again, a lot of the issues that came up are outside our purview, but we really wanted to catalog anything that came from these voices in our community. So we do have all of that. And then the commission and myself and some of the town staff are working on category, categorizing all of these themes into the areas of prevention, harm reduction, treatment and recovery, because as you saw in the settlement agreement, all of the things that can be funded fall into all those categories. So we're sort of, over the next couple of meetings, mapping that out and looking at what, what we could do next in terms of, in another slide we'll get to, but RFPs and contracting with organizations that can put some of these funds to work. One of the things that we really wanted to make note of is that there were lots of themes and frustrations around some of the larger systemic problems related to the opioid epidemic and failures and needs in terms of access to treatment and insurance coverage and all that. And that's difficult for us at the local level to be able to address, but we want to make sure that we don't lose sight of that concern that has come from our community and where is that going to land. So we're sort of looking at, you know, this diagram that you've probably seen in, you know, in many workshops, but you know, the circles of control influencing concern. What do we, excuse me, as a community, what can we control, or what can we have an actionable impact on right now? And what do we, what are we concerned about as a community? What can the commission and the staff and the select board do to influence change in other arenas at higher levels? How can we partner with the county, with the Regional Substance Addiction Council to make sure that these larger systemic issues that our community members are feeling, how can we push that forward? So we're looking at smaller actionable things that we can do as a community, how to partner with local organizations, which there are many, that are really doing good work in our community, and what could they, could they do more if they had more resources? So that's sort of beginning our next phase together.
So as just some parting thoughts, this process started us taking a very deliberate pause and recognizing that the voices of those with lived experience is paramount to how these funds need to be spent. And we may have been able to identify many of these themes, but it would not have been rooted in the voices of the people of this community, the voices of those that have been impacted the most. And so having gone through this process, we think gives it much more richness and meaning because it is rooted in the voices and the experiences of our community members who have been deeply affected by this epidemic. And we were not without our challenges doing this, but we pushed through. And I'm really proud of the team that we created, the design team, but also I'm really proud of my commissioners and how they all came together to, this was a lot of data to throw at them and to say, we have two sessions in two weeks to get through this. But they came through. Our next steps is work with town staff to create an RFP grant application for distribution starting in January of 2024. Continue community engagement via regular commission meetings and additional focus groups as needed. We, we created this process because we wanted something that, moving forward, we could use over and over again as a template, right? Because we have a lot of years that this money is coming to us, and the voices are going to change. And so we want to be able to maybe redo this in three to five years. And now we have a process that we know works quite well. I'm sure it can use some tweaks, but we think that moving forward, we could definitely use this as a way of continuing to have conversations with the community. And outreach to Falmouth Public Schools on youth substance use rates and collaboration on surveys to get updated data. It's been a long time since a youth behavioral risk survey's been done, and, you know, that may be one of the things that, that comes out of the funding. But that's, that's our process. Do any of my commissioners want to add anything?
Any questions or comments from the board?
I do have.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Beverly, how do you, how do we reach the end game with a person who's struggling? See, they come in and they're, they're down and out, they need help. First, you got to address their basic needs, which I see a lot of this is in tune with. But is there a point where we can connect them with some kind of an employment agency? Because I feel like, you know, employment, I think, is really important, because I think people need to be gainfully employed to feel good about themselves. Because if they're just sitting around twiddling their thumbs thinking about being sober, you know, the devil makes work, work for idle hands, and I just feel like there's got to be some kind of a connection. I don't know if we can partner with the town, partner with some larger businesses in the community that might be able to have some jobs that are, you know, you know, not like heavy machinery, but just jobs that are, in case somebody might slip up, it's not like a dangerous position. I don't know what that would be, but we.
Easing back into the.
Easing back into work.
So that's where recovery navigators would come in and be extremely important, because they would help that person navigate housing, job. But first, I think we need to deal with the stigma, because businesses are not going to hire people coming out of treatment who are in recovery, because they don't trust that they will stay in recovery. And sometimes they don't. But isn't it worth giving them a shot? And, you know, somewhere down the line, I know from personal experience that many of these people become very important citizens in our town. And we don't want to just throw them away because we think we can't, we think that they can't beat this addiction. They can beat it. And so recovery navigators, somebody that would walk them through the process, but really addressing the stigma and getting the businesses in town to recognize that they have a lot to gain by employing people coming out of recovery. You won't find people who are more grateful for the opportunity. And the other thing is, you know, what good's a job if you don't have someplace to live? And as we said, these sober homes aren't regulated, so some of them are really, really good and some of them aren't.
I'm going to follow up on, on the sober home piece, because I've received several phone calls this summer about what's the board going to do about some of the sober homes. So that is an issue, and we, there's nothing that we can do. They can call the police, they can call the health department, but the board does not oversee them. I just want to make two other quick comments. One is the need to identify and to treat early trauma, for me, is huge for kids and for adolescents. And then the other piece is the lack of enough behavioral health support in, in Falmouth for, you know, particularly for kids and adolescents. It's a major hurdle. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Somebody else has? I do have one more.
We're over, we're at twenty-two. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Just that I noticed that the amount of funds allocated so far is mostly on treatment rather than prevention, so I guess we're going to gear towards.
We haven't allocated any funds, yeah.
Well, I don't know what I was looking at then, there was a chart of the amount of funds that were delegated, and was it money that was spent or what intends to be spent?
I'm not sure what chart you're referring to.
I think that was that early.
But we, the town has not spent any money as of yet in our.
So these are like projected?
And no projections have been made, so I'm not sure what.
Mr. Brown, if you're, are you looking at the spreadsheet that's in the packet?
Yes.
That is the sources of income from the opiate litigation. That's not spending. That's sources of revenue from the litigation.
There's, there's funds coming from several different settlements, settlement one, settlement two, distributors, manufacturers, pharmacies, so.
I thought they were going to supplement ongoing programs that we already have. These are all new.
The state might, because the state has its own money.
Maybe that's what I was looking at from the county then.
Oh, you might have. The state, in terms of the opiate settlements, the state receives sixty percent of the overall settlement that came, which was in the billions. Sixty percent of the money goes to the state opioid recovery remediation fund, and then forty percent of the, of the funds go to municipalities.
I think I was looking at the packet from the county.
Okay.
And that's the funds that's already being expended, but majority was on treatment rather than any prevention. The prevention was zero.
Prevention is usually the smallest piece of the pie, and that's.
And it should be.
Historically a problem, you know? And that's where we want to partner with the school department, too, to, you know, to get a better baseline assessment of where do we need to start.
Okay, thank you.
And so I want to invite you, please come to a commission meeting, because we're going to continue these conversations. And I think it'll be important for you all to hear what our residents in Falmouth, our community, what they want and what these people are needing to survive.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we are going to move on to authorize a new full-time custodian position for the senior, for senior services. Mr. Renshaw.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Select Board, I want to thank Jill Bishop, our senior center director. She's here tonight to answer any specific questions, but if you'd allow me to do a quick overview. Tonight, we're requesting authorization from the select board to increase the hours of a current part-time custodial position to a full-time custodial position, effective during this current fiscal year for the senior services department. The pay grade is currently a group twenty-three, grade six, and is not being changed from the existing part-time position. As you all know, the senior center currently has funded a part-time nineteen-and-a-half-hour custodial position to assist with daily operations of the center. The position is currently vacant due to a recent resignation, and hence the desire to make the change immediately during this fiscal year, 2024. As you also know, retention of a part-time employee in a lot of departments around the town has been a challenge, and this position has become vacant three times over the past two years. The added cost to increase from a. The added cost to increase from a part-time to a full-time position can be covered by our state formula grant. A full-time position is going to provide much-needed stability for this position going forward. Jill has been kind enough to provide some data. I think you've seen some of this in Jill's reports, quarterly reports. They have over 7,100 participants enrolled in the Senior Centers today, just over two years of operations, with new participants enrolling daily. She's done a great job, her and the staff, in increasing participation numbers. Our goal, as you know, is to increase the hours of coverage and to have consistency in the position, which in turn is going to allow us to extend operating hours to support even more program growth of services wanted by our participants. Madam Chair and Select Board, the additional hours are needed to support the goal of adding some evening hours, quite frankly, for the senior programming and to allow the Senior Center to be accessed for evening board meetings. As you recall, just last week, we, the Select Board, conducted its meeting from the Senior Center. The added custodial hours are needed for room setup and to secure the building and clean it after the evening programs or meetings have ended. This upgraded position from a part-time to a full-time position had been planned for FY '25. But again, as I mentioned earlier, due to the vacancy, it's presented us an opportunity to make the change earlier and hire an individual that's interested in this full-time benefited position. And Madam Chair and Select Board, as you know, this requires a four-fifths vote from the Select Board required to create this additional full-time position. Because there's no change in pay classification, and the position is to be funded from a recurring formula state grant, town meeting action is not required. That's all I have, is kind of an overview and summary. If you have any specific questions between Jill, Peter, and myself, we can answer those. But it's my recommendation, Madam Chair and Select Board, that the Select Board approves this reclassification request of a part-time custodian position to a full-time status, again, in order to more effectively serve the significant increase in program participation and potentially an increase in program offerings going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Renshaw. We recently had the, the, a presentation, am I correct, from the Senior Center regarding their programs, their increase in numbers. And does the board have any questions?
Seems reasonable, no brainer.
Well, you have options for motions, Mr. Brown. Did you have a question?
I just was looking for it in the packet and to see if there was any background. What is the salary? What's the proposed salary?
Do you know? That's off the top of your head.
Jill has it.
So it's a, it's a Grade 6, which is, runs from Step 1, which is 23.15 an hour, to Step 7, which is 29.29 per hour.
Okay, well, that's a reasonable pay. That shouldn't be a barrier to hiring. I was just curious if we were actually paying the right hourly wage. It seems fair. Thank you. I would move approval based on that.
I'll second Mr. Brown's motion.
Motion to reclassify the part-time custodial position to full-time. That's your motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move into Town Manager's Supplemental Report.
No supplemental report tonight.
Whoa.
Bob's going to be bummed he missed this one.
Select Board Reports.
Had kind of a quiet week. If anybody wants to start ahead of me, I'll see if I can think of anything.
We both, Mr. Brown and I, attended the Falmouth Housing Trust fundraiser.
That was fun.
And it was nice to see some of the families who've moved into the affordable housing that's been built over the last year or so.
It was nice to see that Laura Moynihan has agreed to be the new executive director, and Karen Bissonnette's going to stay on as fundraiser, which she's pretty good at. So that was interesting.
Okay, we have no other reports. Mr. Brown, are you still looking?
There's nothing important.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, folks.